All right, everybody. Good evening. It's five o'clock on March 23, 2023. Meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. Want to note this meeting is being offered remotely as an altered means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts, Acts of 2022, and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anybody's recording this meeting, please notify me at this time. Okay, hearing none, I know for the record participated in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey Chair, Board Members, Joseph Fisher, and Elizabeth Klein. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Believe we have two sets of minutes for consideration this evening. Joe and Liz, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. All right. With that, then I would take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated March 15, 2023, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
Now I'm gonna as well as the motion carries, I'll take a second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 20, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm gonna as well as the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of Hingham Youth Hockey for special one-day wine and malt beverages license for the Hingham Youth Hockey Spring Fundraiser to be held at the Hingham Historical Society on Saturday, April 1, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I believe Kevin McDevitt is gonna make the presentation this evening. Do we have Mr. McDevitt online? I see Kevin right there. Kevin, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, and you could tell us a little bit about your event.
Absolutely. So like you said, this is Kevin McDevitt. I live at 280 High Street here in Hingham. And the event is, Hingham Youth Hockey runs an annual fundraiser in the spring. This is our sixth one in a row. And we basically invite the parents of kids that play for Hingham Youth Hockey to come. We give out some awards for some of the kids. We have a silent and live auction where people can bid on various items that are donated. And we have a cash bar as well as some food that we provide to people. So it's a really fun night, pretty low-key. Oh, sorry, I should mention also, we have a solo guitar player just playing some music on his guitar and singing. But yeah, pretty, pretty low-key event. And this year, we're scheduled at the the Hingham Historical Society, which we're really excited about. I guess they revamped the whole interior of that building. So we have a whole committee planning how we're gonna get it set up and should be a nice classy, classy evening. So we're looking forward to it.
Kevin, thank you. Just a couple preliminary questions. How many people do you anticipate attending the event?
We said a max of 175. I think that's pretty optimistic. Usually we're somewhere between 125, 150.
Excellent. And the event's gonna be from, yeah, 6 to 10:00 PM. Okay, great. All right. I would just ask that, you know, obviously, I know that Historical Society does events there. They, they direct people where to park in the different lots downtown, so they don't overwhelm the restaurants or any other businesses that might need that parking. So if you could work with them, that'd be fantastic. And Tom, I'm anticipating, I assume that the Police Department has no problems with this, this, this event?
Chief has reviewed it and has signed off. He is requesting that there be at least one detail on site.
Okay, great. All right, Liz, any questions?
I did see the request for the detail, so I'm sure that will, will be organized. And Kevin, it's a beautiful space. I think it'll, it'll work out really well at the Historical Society. So no questions. I reviewed the application. It looked all in order.
Joe, any questions?
I just had one question on the servers. The application lists two people, Natalia Wood and Shannon Kavanaugh, and says attached are proof of their training. There's only, I only see something for Natalia Wood. I didn't see anything for Shannon Kavanaugh that's attached to this application.
Yeah, I just followed up with, so Natalia is my main contact, and I followed up with her last night to get the the, sorry, tips certificate for the other server as well. I actually don't have it at this point, but that would be a requirement for us to have somebody serving. If she can't provide that, we'll just use the one server for the event.
Okay, so our approval would be for Ms. Wood and it'd be Kavanaugh could only serve contingent upon the tip certification.
The town receiving.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kevin, the town will, will need to have that certification on file.
Okay, got it.
All right. Joe, anything else?
No, that's it. I thought everything else was, was in order and it looked good.
All right. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? If you could just raise your hand and we will unmute yourself. Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request, I'm sorry, of Hingham Youth Hockey for a special one-day well, wine and malt beverages license for the Hingham Youth Hockey Spring Fundraiser to be held at the Hingham Historical Society on Saturday, April 1, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm gonna as well as the motion carries. Kevin, appreciate all you do for the hockey program. It's a wonderful program and wish you luck with the event.
Great. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is fiscal year 24 override. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the tax impact and associated outreach efforts. What I'd like to do is break the presentation down into Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Motziger maybe talking about the tax impact and take us through slides related to the tax impacts. And Assistant Town Administrator Art Robert talk about outreach, outreach efforts that we intend to engage in. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you, Bill. So as you mentioned, we just wanted to provide some updates on both of these areas. We've talked a little bit about estimated tax impacts in the past, but we wanted to, again, update some of this information. All of these slides will be posted on the website tomorrow morning. So this slide just quickly shows at three different levels of assessed value. We tried to isolate the impact of the override in FY24, since that's the vote before the town this spring. So you see right here, the estimated FY24 tax bill without the override, and that includes everything, the normal 2.5% increase, the CPA surcharge, and the excluded debt, including the foster and public safety facility projects approved in the fall. The second row here kind of highlights the estimated tax increase from the override itself. That results in a, in a total tax bill in this row. And what you see is that the impact of that is a 7.8% increase in the FY24 tax bill. There is more detailed information. I know people can't read this on the screen, but we'll be able to download it on the website. We've pushed that out five years and kind of, and tried to show in a more granular level the impacts of the two projects from the fall and the override vote this spring. So that information is there for folks who want to dig in a little bit deeper. The same way, just focusing on the median assessed value in Hingham, which right now is just under 900. We took the same five-year data and just put it in a graph for, for those who, a visual like this is easier to grasp. So the green represents the normal property tax growth over time. We've started in 23, the current fiscal year. So you can see that both the two projects in the fall and the override would go into effect in FY24. That would be the first year where you see both of those in tax bills. So you have the orange representing the tax increase for foster and public safety. That grows over time, except that it peaks in FY29 and then starts to decline in FY30. So we don't want to give the impression that those two projects will, will continue to increase. They will peak in FY29 and then decrease from there. And then, of course, the, the pink or purple color is the override impact on top of those things. What I think most people actually care about right now is our tax impact calculator that went live on the override website this week. So that's where you can go and enter your exact address in Hingham to see what the estimated 24 impact would be for you. And we've heard some feedback that people are really starting to use this. So hopefully that's a helpful tool. We also wanted to update some of the analysis that we did as part of the Sustainable Budget Task Force. So we presented this, I think, before where we took, just looking among our benchmark communities here. The state collects data on the average single-family property tax bill. So this fiscal year in FY23, we're in the number 11 spot. When you roll that data forward by one year to FY24 and add the impact of the override and the two projects on it, we moved from the 11th spot to the 10th spot. So we're still very much near the midpoint of our benchmark communities. We also wanted to update the data that the state collects on income trends in town compared to real estate property tax bills in town. So this shows the 15-year history for Hingham and the trends that, that we've seen here recently. That said, this trend does not represent everyone's situation in town. So we have been trying to do a lot more outreach around the tax exemptions and the tax relief programs that the town offers. We offer over 12 of them. You can see them here. And for folks who are eligible for these, they really could help offset the impact of the two projects in the fall and the override this spring. So we, we continue to encourage people to reach out to the assessing office, to talk to Erin Walsh and her staff. They're very knowledgeable about how, how all these different programs work, and they can help people figure out what they might qualify for. So again, we just wanted to highlight all of that. And then I will turn it over to Art to talk a little about our override outreach efforts.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Given all the hard work that's been invested in, in setting up this override decision for, for the, the community and the preparation for town meeting, we obviously think it's very important to get the word out to the community by a number of different means to let them know that we have a lot of information available in a number of different formats that can help, help people understand the issues and, and participate. Most immediately, we, over the near term, we have three information sessions set to communicate directly with residents in the community. Tonight at 7 o'clock, we'll be meeting with residents at Linden Ponds. Next Thursday, the 30th, we have a public information session set in person at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. And the, and on Tuesday, April 11, we'll be offering another opportunity to, to interact with residents, this time by Zoom, also at 7:00 PM. In each case, we're, we're looking for, to share all the work that we've, we've discussed regarding the override and critically provide different ways for people in the community to engage directly, to ask questions and get answers to items that are important to them. One way we want to be sure that residents are aware of all the basics was a mailer that we put together and got into the mail early this week. Essentially, a postcard summarizing a few things. The, the key dates, the, for town meeting, April 24 at, at 7:00 at Hingham High School, as well as the town election, which is on the 29th, Saturday, with polls open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Also, information about how to participate in our public information sessions and critically a, a reference to our, our website, which is essentially the information hub where we're putting all of our, our data presentations and insights in providing a QR code for residents to get easy access directly to that webpage. Next, thank you. An important part of, of, of getting the message out to the community is a, as a series of five informational videos that we've put together. We completed a, a good amount of the, of the recording yesterday and will be done on Friday morning. We're releasing these videos on a weekly basis to let people know or provide basic responses to questions about different aspects of the override and, and also reinforcing the, the key dates for information sessions, the key dates for town meeting and the town election and the, in our website as an important hub. Next, please. Using, using our website and using our videos, we certainly have a, a platform to, to reach out to the community. And we're, we're, we're doing that in a number of other different ways. First and foremost, social media. We're using Facebook to let people know about our information sessions and the video releases and related information, sending, sending posts that, that can reach up to 3,400 followers of the town webpage or, or the town Facebook account. I would encourage everyone to, through their Facebook accounts, to, to reshare or to, to share our posts with your networks to be sure that that information's reaching everybody. We're certainly continuing with press releases and email alerts that we're sending to 800 subscribers to our Civic Plus Notify Me system. We're planning additional outreach efforts. You've got media opportunities lined up. And we're also working with the Senior Center and have, have put information materials into the Senior Center newsletter called the Central Times. That's reaching at least 850 active members in the community. And we also have worked with Harbor Media to distribute our, our different graphics that we've prepared as, as informational PSAs. They are also broadcasting our videos. And it's important to, to note that in addition, our Linden Ponds event, which we're conducting tonight, will be recorded and shared with the entire Linden Ponds community through their internal TV network in early April. Next, please. Now, all of this is intended, all this work is intended to refer people back to our website, our information hub. This is where we're constantly adding information, adding our videos. We've added the tax calculator and presentations as we go. So there'll be in one place, a, a location for all residents to, to learn everything, of all the work that's been done to develop, to develop the overlay. And that's it. I'll just close by reminding folks of the importance of participating in town meeting in, on the 24th of April, a Monday evening, as well as town election, which was on Saturday, the 29th. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. A couple comments from me, then I go to Liz and Joe and the public. Wanted to say that, happy to see the tax calculator up and running. I went to it this week and tried it. It's very easy to use. All you gotta do is put your street in and then put your address in, and it comes up right away with what the tax impacts will be. So anybody who's interested in that, I know we've had a couple residents ask about that. That should be pretty easy to find and pretty easy to, to use in terms of putting your address in. And Michelle, you said this information is all gonna be posted tomorrow morning on our website, correct?
Yes, it will.
Outstanding. Okay, great. Liz, do you have any questions?
Excellent. No questions exactly, but thank you for putting this together. The tax impact graphs, I think, are, are important and telling. So thank you for updating those. Certainly, as people know, through the Sustainable Budget Task Force process, we did a lot of benchmarking, and those were two important points that, that we looked at with previous data. So thank you for updating that to our, our most recent data. I think it's important. While we know the timing is not great of this override and not everyone is in the financial position that those graphs necessarily show, it is important to look at, at the whole town and, and the trends and just relative to the cost of providing services and, and being realistic about that. So thank you. And the tax impact calculator, I'm excited to see that up and running as of Monday, which is great. I have also used it. It's very easy to use. Certainly, if people have questions or have any technical difficulties, just reach out to us or send an email to that override email address. And thank you, Art, for outlining the communications. Certainly, my, I got the mailer today, so that, that hit today, the 23rd, I think, in most households. And certainly, we want people to be part of this process. So please, you know, attend to an information session. Save the date, put it on your calendar to come to town meeting and vote at the town election or by mail early. So thank you both for that. Look forward to the information session and, and hearing the feedback from Linden Ponds after tonight.
Liz, thank you. Joe, any questions or comments?
I would just repeat and echo the thanks that Bill, you and Liz have given to the group that's assembled. I do have one, it's not a question, it's a comment, on the chart that shows that after we do the override, we flip from the 11th to the 10th position. That assumes that no other town is also gonna be doing any sort of tax increase or override or debt exclusions, and we don't know what's gonna happen there. So in fact, that assumes that only Hingham is acting, and it's unlikely that we are the only town acting. So that, in fact, it probably overstates the impact of the Town of Hingham's actions compared to our benchmark communities. It's an important, it's an important chart. You know, it shows that we're flipping with Norwell. But in fact, it may be that we remain back in the 11th position because other towns also are taking actions this year and future years. Otherwise, thank you. Great job. No other questions.
Joe, thank you. All right, let me turn to members of the public. I know that we don't have anybody other than us whose video is on. But if you have a question, just, if you could just hit the race hand button on Zoom, and I will call on you, and you're welcome to ask as many questions as you'd like. Or you could put your video on to it and wave at me as well, whatever, whatever's best. See if anybody has any questions. In a couple seconds here. Lynn, you have a question. There you are. All right. I knew someone would have a question, so let me. There you are, Lynn.
Thank you.
We all know you are Lynn, but if you could just say your name and address for the record, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. It's Lynn Barclay at Loving Cottage Street. So I'm looking at the slide that represents the tax impact for the median property, and I'm trying to see, are there percentages that are included here? I'm trying to look at the percentage impact.
Well, what, Michelle, could you pull that slide up and?
It's the five-year estimated property tax impact.
So we'll pull up the slide and maybe we can try to answer for you. Hold on.
Right.
This one, Lynn?
Yes.
I think the easier, the one right before that, and, and again, some of these are on the website. We'll post the rest tomorrow. The one before, it really breaks it down by dollars, which may be easier to do some of that analysis.
So it might be tough to see on this screen, Lynn, but you, you'll have a good shot on the website tomorrow. You can kind of expand it a little bit. But let's see if we can.
Okay.
Can we get that other side a little larger, Michelle? Or is that, I don't think we can on this presentation.
I can on PowerPoint, but I.
But on the website, people can kind of expand it, right? So they can see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the percentages are there.
Yeah. Are you asking the percent increase, Lynn?
Yeah, I'm looking at the percent increase. I didn't know if it was on the graph one, which I think would be easier to see. But if it's, it is stipulated here.
Yes.
Yeah, I see. Okay.
Right there.
Yep. I do see it. Okay.
And that's the percentage increase just related to the override, not the year-over-year tax increase. But you can do, like, we can do that math with the numbers provided here as well.
So this does not include the two debt exclusion projects?
So if we're looking like, say, in the middle with the green one is the median, the debt exclusion projects start here with this 241. That's the row with the debt exclusion projects. So you get to this total bill, this 9634 before the override. The 751 is in the override, and then the total bill with everything is here at the bottom.
Okay. Okay, thanks for explaining that, Michelle.
Sure. We wanted to kind of, so you could see the pieces of it.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks for the question, Lynn.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone. All right. With that, then I will move on to our next agenda item. All right. Next item on the agenda is to vote to confirm the FY24 final budget. Gonna have Michelle present on this agenda item. Michelle, go ahead.
Sure. There, there was one last moving piece of the budget, which just related to the South Shore Country Club. So we just thought to make sure, for the record, that the select board was approving the same exact budget that the advisory committee approved earlier this week. We were just asking if you guys would consider revoting the, the South Shore Country Club budget numbers. Their balance budget is the same as their recommended budget because they are an enterprise fund, so they're unaffected by the override. Whether it passes or fails, their operations will be the same. The one piece that was not included in the spreadsheet before was their capital. For the first time, they're using some of their retained earnings, which is essentially the country club fund balance. So they're using some of the routine earnings for two capital projects this year. And we wanted to make sure that number was included, so they, they could actually do that. Thank you.
And Michelle, does our vote simply aligns our numbers with the advisory committee's numbers for the recommendations of the meeting, correct?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Yep, I have no problem with, with this item. Joe, any comment, any questions?
No questions.
Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Any members of public have any questions about this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend a South Shore Country Club balanced budget of $2,754,998.
Second.
All of the favorite, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm gonna as well as the motion carries.
I move to recommend a South Shore Country Club recommended budget of $2,754,998.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm gonna as well as the motion carries. And I'm gonna note for the record that the total FY24 balanced budget, including capital outlay, is 1,439,263,74. Please also note for the record that the total FY24 recommended budget, including capital outlay, is 1,518,168,41. Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Appreciate it. All right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of Warren Article FF, which is a potential purchase of 30 Summer Street. So we have Tom making the presentation this evening, and we also have Real Estate Counselor Susan Murphy joining us. So Tom, obviously, a lot of movement here in the last couple days. So why don't you tell us where we're at and any information that you could provide that might be helpful to us in making decisions this evening would be appreciated. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Yeah, it's exactly that, Bill. We, we were able to, to make movement on a lot of information, the questions that you guys had, questions we've heard from, from other parties. And we just wanted to try to make this situation as clear as possible. So I did put a few slides together to try to do so. So we'll walk through the property itself. We'll talk about the process that we followed so far, some potential uses, and then the timing and, of course, town meeting and how that might work. Okay, so just so folks can acclimate themselves. If you can see my mouse here, this is the, the Rotary on Route 3A, heading out to, being out to Situate, Summer Street, heading up towards Hull, and then down 3A.
And we're not seeing what.
Yeah, we're only seeing the cover sheet.
Only seeing the cover sheet. All right, hold on a second. Let me try again. How's that?
We got the cover sheet.
You just need to advance the slides, I think.
Yeah, I was advancing it through the, through Zoom. I'll do them this way. Am I on agenda now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll just do it this way. For time's sake. All right, so this is the, the harbor, obviously, Rotary, 3A to Situate, summer up to Hull, 3A through Hingham. The reason I wanted to highlight this is all of the non-stated properties are town-owned property along the harbor. This is the bathing beach. You got the boat ramp area and Iron Horse, Whitney Wharf, up through Barnes Wharf. There are three privately owned properties. One of them is 30 Summer Street, which is the property in question. 26 Summer Street next to that is the Marina, and then 3 Oda Street, which is the Marina, along with Red Eye Roasters. And so that's a, that's the, the, the entire deal of the, of the look at the harbor. As we zoom in a little bit, it just gives a little bit of a better view of the three privately owned parcels along the harbor. And again, 30 Summer Street is the property in question. That's the slot here. Okay, so just three slides to walk through. Process so far. So the town was approached by the seller a couple of months ago, looking to gauge potential interest in the purchasing of the property at 30. um, a couple of months ago, uh, looking to gauge potential interest in the purchasing of the property at three, uh, at 30 um 30 Summer Street. Uh, he was asking um $1,550,000. Uh, we met with the seller to discuss the potential pricing, uh, that, that 155 number. We talked a little bit about what terms might look like and the timing of everything. At that point, we agreed that the town would commission a property appraisal. Uh, that appraisal um was uh was, was completed with data available through the end of February in 23. Uh, and that set the fair market value of the property at 1.25 million. Um, and then there was a uh the, the negotiations have since been active a lot with the seller between us and the seller. Uh, the other, the other thing that we did is uh in that period of time, we commissioned a phase one environmental site assessment. This is a site assessment that basically goes through and does document research to determine whether or not there's any potential environmental hazards on site. Um, their findings from that, from that phase one assessment was that a phase two assessment, which is a um, a more uh physical assessment isn't, is in fact warranted. Um, and that would include soil sampling, um, ground penetrating radar analysis, et cetera. Okay, so some of the potential uses um for the site at 30 Summer Street, uh, after some discussion among staff. Um, just so everyone understands, we are in the midst of creating a harbor master plan. That's a project that's being run um through uh, through staff. We, our consultant is working on that. We have a, a draft uh plan in place. Uh, it is still, um, it is still at the staff review phase. And that review is happening, but just so everyone understands that there is a master planning process. Um, and it, and it would include um the area around 30 Summer Street. Um, so to that end, it's helpful to understand if the town wants to purchase this property or not as we determine the uses for the entirety of the harbor. Uh, uses of 30 Summer Street specific, uh specifically could include uh the following scenarios, but are just, I want to be clear, are not limited to these scenarios. Um, that we could put the harbor master down there, some public restrooms, uh perhaps uh as a way to brought folks in from the, from the harbor, from their moorings um into the, into the downtown area through um, I given them public restrooms and showers and then I track them up through the downtown area for shopping and dining. Um, it's also possible that it could be parking for that public act, public water access, but also for as to augment the Hingham Maritime Center's operations. Um, where they're using, uh, they in the public use uh Barnes Wharf. And then another possible use would be for the recreation department uh for some of their programming, which could include paddle boarding, yoga, spinning, uh, tha- that type of, type of program. And then, like I said, um, some, a public access point for, for shopping and dining as well as um, of course, we could, if we owned it, we could always rent it or lease it out to a private party. And then the finals, the final slide, I just wanted to talk briefly about the timing of this and how it affects with town meeting. So I'll just read these. If the board decides to leave this article on the warrant tonight, uh, there will be no vote. If that happens, you've already put it on the warrant. Uh, it will be included in the printed warrant that will be sent to the printer tomorrow with the caveat that the select board and AdCom will determine their recommendations at a later date prior to town meeting, which would then be made available to town meeting in supplemental form. And then uh due to the amount of time needed to complete a phase two environmental site assessment that I mentioned earlier, that work would be completed at the request of the select board if town meeting approves an appropriation and a purchase and sale agreement is successfully negotiated, which is with the seller, which would potentially include consideration of the cost of any remediation required as a result of that phase two assessment. So there's a lot there. Um, there's a lot going on with this. It's, it's a, you perhaps unique opportunity to purchase one of the three remaining privately held um parcels along the harbor. Um, these don't come up very often and that's kind of the position, uh, the, the, you know, the situation that, that you guys are, are facing right now.
Tom, thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it. Um, I think what, you know, I think what I'm gonna recommend we do tonight is um, we each offer some, I know, of course, I know there's a lot to this decision. Um, I think each of us should offer some comments and have an opportunity to ask questions. And obviously I'm gonna open it up for the public, for the public to comment and ask questions. Um, and then we can deliberate for a little bit and see where we're at as a board. I'm gonna make a suggestion to the board. Um, see if you like it or not, um, but we'll see how it goes. Um, so uh, uh, you know, first of all, Tom, thank you for the presentation. I, I wanted you to do this tonight to get as much information out to the public as we possibly can to let them know, you know, where we're at with this potential purchase and you know why we're here. And um, you know, I, I've said kind of all along, I said this in the executive session, I'm gonna say it tonight, you know, I'm kind of on the fence here with this purchase. I, I, I am very mindful of the fact that there, the property itself is strategically located for what we uh want to do as a community down at the harbor. I'm also very mindful of the fact that uh this is probably gonna be the only opportunity in our lifetimes to purchase this property. I don't think this opportunity is gonna come up again. Um, also, you know, there's been some questions about timing and I would submit you that time, timing is of the essence here simply because I don't think the, the seller is gonna wait. Um, he's given us a bit of a timeframe here and we're gonna have only so much time to do this and then um, then it probably, you know, probably move on to another seller. Um, sorry, probably move on to on the buyer. So there's a lot of moving parts to it. So that's where I am on one end. On the other end, uh, I do, I would like to see more due diligence done. I know, and this is no one's fault, obviously, just we, this was only, this process was only um initiated not long ago, but I do want to make sure that when we make an ultimate, right, you know, we make our ultimate vote to the meeting and and AdCom makes a vote to the meeting, um, that we have as much information as possible before uh, April 24th. And I know we're gonna, we're starting with the phase two assessment. But I'm gonna want to know as much about that phase two assessment before I stand up at town meeting and make a recommendation that we, you know, we want to go forward with this purchase or not. Uh, I'm happy to hear, um, in talking with Michelle and Tom last couple of days that we can uh finance this property through our debt service. So it will not result in um a tax increase, because you know, we're already uh recommending the significant override this year. Uh, so if this was gonna result in a tax increase, I would not be in favor of it. Um, but even financing through a debt service is, 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 um, is a lot in and, in and of itself. So, um, that's where I'm at with the project. Lastly, um, in socializing this, I would like to talk more to residents, get some more feedback from residents. Um, wanna talk, talk more about people in favor of this project. Some people have already been emailing me and contacting me and I want to hear from people who might not be in favor of it. Um, and I also want to consult with um members of the advisory committee to the extent possible, see where advisory is at with it as well. So with that, let me turn it over to Joe.
So Bill, that was a perfect summary of, of the issues, the pros and the cons. Um, and the timing isn't great. It'd be nice to have more time to evaluate, more time to do due diligence. Tom, in your presentation, um, you, it included something that I had um, suggested, which is holding off on doing the phase two until after town meeting. Uh, this board might want to reconsider that and, and proceed really to address the issue that Bill said. Namely, going up to town meeting and, and having a, a clear understanding. Uh, that in, for me, in part weighs on whether or not we, we reach a decision on price. Um, because if we're still too far apart, it's not worth money. We're, we're spending the money on uh on a phase two. If, if we can have a meeting of the minds with the seller with respect to the price, then I think I would be in favor of, of moving forward with additional due diligence prior to a town meeting vote. Uh, so that we can go up and, and be clear as to what the impact's going to be for the town. Um, I agree with Bill. This is a unique opportunity, um, and that it adds value to the town. Uh, I know the Harvard Development Committee has been very active and, and looking at this. Um, I know when we've evaluated resilience for the town, when, when we're considering climate change, uh, control of the harbor area is critical and this adds to our ability to control. Um, I am off, also mindful that um we got a lot of expenses coming up and we need to make sure we're balancing uh the right needs of the town. Uh, this is for me, um, near, eh, there, there are near-term benefits, but it's, it's more looking out for the long-term interests of the town, um, which this board needs to do. Um, so I, I am at this point leaning towards uh moving forward with the Warren article, uh, which my understanding is it authorizes but does not require the select board to proceed with, with the purchase and sale. So if in fact, ultimately we decide it's not worth it, we don't do it. If we decide it is worth it, we do do it, but given the legal constraints on acting, I think we need to move forward and get this before town meeting. Thanks.
Joe, thank you. Liz.
Thank you both. Um, I think we're in similar spots. Um, I certainly see this as a unique and important opportunity for the town, so I'm glad it was brought to us, um, and everyone's taking it seriously and, and working diligently as quickly as possible. Um, cause time is certainly of the essence. Um, eh, I have been weighing the pros and cons myself, certainly. The pros, um, in my mind are economic development. Um, there may be an opportunity to gen- generate revenue um, as well as recreation, additional services for residents. And then of course, climate resiliency and having control of that part of the seawall and wharfs, et cetera. Um, so I think there's a lot of advantage. Um, my biggest issue or con is the timing in every sense of the word. Um, you know, just not having enough time to do due diligence before town meeting. Um, the seller obviously is, is motivated, so it's possible we lose this opportunity by April 24th, kind of regardless of, of how we want to move forward. Um, and just, and, and the phase two assessment. Um, I, I was gonna ask that question if we're gonna move forward with that before town meeting. Um, I think that would be my preference so that we do have more information before town meeting. Um, it is my understanding that that assessment may not be able to be complete. Um, so I guess that is a question, how much information realistically, how much additional information will we have by April 24th? Um, i- is a question for the group. I don't know, Tom, if you have a sense of that or.
Sure, yeah. So i- i- it will, it'll cost in the ballpark of $20,000. Haven't got a definitive quote yet. Um, and it will, and it'll take between six to eight weeks is what we're being told to get a final report. But what we would hope is if we, if you did want to move forward and we were to engage, that we would do that as early as tomorrow. Um, and then uh try to have the, and press on them the urgency. And perhaps we could get individual pieces of information as they become available, even if not in total final report form. Uh, but just like you're saying, I think Liz, data points, right? Uh, the three of you need data points if you're gonna be making an informed decision.
Exactly.
So we would do our best, yeah.
Yeah, so and maybe we can work with whoever's doing the assessment to identify kind of the high priority indicators there, you know, that would be eh, showstoppers. Um, and that could be identified quickly. Um, certainly we'd want to know that for April 24th. Um, and, and I guess it's important to keep in mind that even if it was um, voted on at town meeting, if we then got additional information that this was not a good opportunity or there was something wrong with the property that we obviously wouldn't have to move forward. Um, so that's important for people to keep in mind, but as Bill mentioned, I think it's, you know, I'd love to hear more public feedback on this as well. Um, and eh, you know, and hear from the Harvard Development Committee, eh, as you said, their master plan is not complete, um, which that would help if it, if it was and, but I, I think there's probably enough of a draft that we can think about how this plays into that. Um, and, and get their insight, um, so that we, you know, are setting ourselves up to move that forward in, in the future as well. Um, so again, I'm, I'm definitely split. I don't feel confident yet in the, in the decision, but I, I would support moving forward to get additional information.
I can just respond to Liz, one thing in terms of if we find something that's a showstopper, often the way these transactions progress would be, we find something and it requires an adjustment in the price.
Mm-hmm.
Because we'll need some, to do some sort of remediation. It'll cost X amount of dollars. So I, I think a likely scenario is not that there will be a showstopper, but it'll be, um, once we run a price, as part of that may not go to the seller, it may be going to a, a company that does remediation work.
Sure, good point.
So I mean, to, to a couple of both of your points, I tend to, both your points are very good. Um, you know, given the fact that the town years ago purchased and, and a close, closely located parcel that had some environmental issues. For me, knowing the results of the phase two or as much information as possible is going to be essential to helping me inform my decision and making my ultimate decision and recommendation for town meeting. But let me ask, I think maybe JR or Susan, do we know how much information we're gonna be have, we're gonna have available to us? Let's say by the week of the 17th?
Bill, I, I spoke to the environmental consultant who did the phase one last week. Um, there's different pieces. One of it has to do with, um, because it was a former gas station. Um, there's information that, um, the underground storage tanks were removed. But what is a typical process is to just do a ground penetrating radar and confirm whether or not there's any remaining tanks there. That's something, once they can schedule it and get the vendor on site to do it, they would know that the same day. Um, so that one's the first question that you know, it's likely the town would have that information pretty quickly. Um, but to the extent that they might do borings just to check for any potential buried contaminants, um, those need to go out to the lab. So, um, it's going to depend on the timing of when the town says, okay, yes, we have a deal with the seller is able to authorize the consultant to schedule that and then it gets scheduled and then it goes to the lab. So tho- those are the, the, um, the questions that, um, we, I can't give you tonight on the timing. The consultants are unable to tell us tonight because they have to get the go-ahead, schedule it, get it to the lab. Um, so I'd say, you know, um, it's, it's, it's possible to get that information by town meeting, but I can't tell you for sure what the timing is right now.
Very well, thank you, Susan. All right, uh, Joe, Liz, any question or comments? And I'm gonna open it up for the public.
No, I'd, I'd love to hear if there are any public comments.
Nothing further.
Okay. All right, any members of the public have any uh questions, the comments, um, about this agenda article? Again, if you could just, um, uh, raise your hand on Zoom and I will, um, I'll call on you or if you could just, or if you want to put your camera on and wave at me as well, but either one works. Give it a couple more seconds.
It worked last time.
That came in, then save me and ask you. I don't see anyone. Okay. All right, well, again, uh, uh, we got, we got one. All right, someone has their hand up. Can, um, Michelle, could you, if you, eh, if you're hosting, Michelle, could you?
That was just me. It's just me.
JR, do you have a question?
So the only thing that I was gonna say was to kind of address, um, Liz's question regarding what the um Harvard Development Committee would say and how it reflects in their plans. Um, I don't want to speak too far on their behalf. I think the one element is that there's been a lot of discussion about what we are able to do on Barnes Wharf as it's currently situated. And there's been some discussion of um, whether we are able to construct some additional usable square footage over water to support activities on Barnes Wharf. If we were to acquire the property, that makes the necessity of expansion on Barnes Wharf uh, less of a priority or need. Without, that's a soft way of saying that I think it helps what we're trying to accomplish. what we're trying to accomplish on Barnes Wharf generally. But that's does not necessarily reflect, you know, all of the different programming pieces and what the actual priorities for the use of that land might be.
JR, while we got you there, one, you just, you just triggered my mind about another point I had written down. I didn't bring up. Obviously, we we are going to engage in quite a, quite a bit of resiliency efforts with respect to seawalls out at the harbor. How would this help those efforts? Or would they, how would that, how would this purchase impact those efforts?
Depending at all. So the land that is under consideration for purchase is actually somewhat elevated and does not have a primary risk of flooding, so it's not a primary flood pathway during significant storm events. There's a low spot right at Barnes Wharf, which, so there's thirty Summer Street, and then you've got the Mast dot right of way around the rotary. And then beyond that, you've got the Barnes Wharf property. Now, there, the seawall, once you get onto Barnes Wharf proper, that elevation drops. But the land that's under consideration for purchase here is actually several feet elevated above projected flood. So this was not, this was not a modeled flood pathway, so I would, in many respects, it doesn't impact our resiliency efforts at all because it is always already elevated.
Okay, thank you, JR. All right, last call for any questions, comments from the public. All right, seeing none, I would move to deliberation. Now, what I'm gonna recommend that we do is that we, we keep the art, we keep this article on the warrant as is at this, at this juncture. Because, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, what we could do, well, actually, gonna keep it on as is at at this juncture. The week of the seventeenth, the week before town meeting, so either, the seventeenth is a holiday. So maybe on the eighteenth or the nineteenth, we will meet again, and we will see where we are with all the information with respect to the phase two. And then we will take but we will have further deliberation on whether or not we want to go forward with the project at that time. And if we don't want to go forward, let's say, for example, we get some information from the phase two that we're not comfortable with, or we don't have enough information at that point to make an informed decision or a confident recommendation to town meeting, we could vote to take no action, and then we could ask our colleagues on advisory to take a vote of no action. Now, this has been done before where members of advisory would just although it's on the warrant, we have now recommending no action on this article. And the meeting usually follows suit with that, and they can explain why. But at this point, I am comfortable, as Joe said, and I think Liz is hinting at that we can move forward, we continue with the due diligence process, and we see where we are. So we kind of have like a status meeting on either the eighteenth or the nineteenth. So that's kind of what my suggestion would be, but let me see what Joe will listen. Joe, what are your thoughts on that?
I think we should proceed exactly as you suggested. And that we'll have further further information. Ultimately, this board will need to make a recommendation on price. And usually, the P and S price assumes there's no issue with respect to environmental concerns or any other concerns. We will need to reach agreement as to what the purchase price is, assuming there's no other issue. And we're not there yet. So I think we're gonna have to meet probably in executive session, have further discussions so we can reach agreement on that topic. As, which I think we need to do regardless of what happens with respect to due diligence.
Liz, your thoughts?
I agree. Yeah, we'll, we'll need to meet in executive session, and then I think it makes sense to meet again with and see what additional information we have. And obviously coordinate with advisory committee, who I think is is doing some due diligence as well between now and town meeting.
Okay.
All right, just jump in, just just real quick on that. Just my only, my only caveat, and we need as much time as we can get, as Susan just explained. But I just want to make sure that we we don't everyone listening or watching this meeting in recording doesn't think that we're setting a meeting for the eighteenth or nineteenth. We'll meet when we, when we can and when we need to at some point prior to town meeting. We don't, right, right, Bill, I mean, we don't definitively know we though, what would be those dates, I don't think yet. I just want to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah, I mean, that week at some point, but but obviously, we want to take as much time as we can before we make our, before we make our recommendation. That's the week before town meeting, but yeah, it might not be the eighteen, might be the nineteen, but probably we'll be in around that timeframe.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, not definitely on those dates, but if you could just note that we're gonna have a a status meeting at that time to see where we're at with it and to analyze as much of the information as possible to see whether or not we want to go forward or not.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Okay, so no vote was required on that article, on that agenda item as we're just as is. And I just want to emphasize one other point I made earlier. We are, we are looking for input from the public, you know, we are, I'd like to get some feedback from residents on how people feel about this. I am gonna be consulting with members of the advisory committee, see what their thoughts are on it as well, and be talking with members of the Harbor Development Committee and another resident. So we get a lot of emails, we get a lot of comments. Don't be shy about this one as well. Just let us know what your thoughts are. Okay, next item on the agenda is to adopt and sign the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant. All right, Tom, you're up.
So this, this one is pretty simple. This is the culmination of the last whatever five months of work. The warrant is complete. It is in your hands and avail and able for you, ready for you to vote to have it signed, and then we'll send it to the printer tomorrow.
Sounds good. And it's gonna, we, obviously, we have a legal deadline. We have to meet to get it in people's mailboxes. I'm assuming gonna be no, no concerns with that, correct?
No concerns. So we'll get it to the printer tomorrow. We'll, we'll meet that deadline. No problems.
Outstanding. Joe, any questions?
No.
Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'll see if there's public comment on this agenda. I don't think there will be, but let me see if anybody has questions. Okay, I'll take a vote. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt and sign. I think we do have a question, Bill.
Okay.
From Glenn.
Glenn, go ahead. Glenn, name and address for the record, please.
Glenn Mangerean for Huckleberry Hill.
Good to see you, Glenn.
And I'm sorry that I was late in coming in, and you may have covered this. Is the, is the the first item to present a balanced budget and then follow that with an override? Is that the way it is in the warrant?
It is.
And and if someone is in favor of the override, do they vote no for the balanced budget? And then yes for the override?
No, you'll, you'll, the the balanced budget in that situation would be adopted in its entirety, and then the override will follow with the additional amount needed to bring the total amount to the one fifty-one.
So you have to vote V S on both? Is that?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Good question.
Thank you, Glenn. Anyone else? All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt and sign the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant in the form attached here too.
Second.
All in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. The motion carries unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is appointments. I do not believe we have any appointments this evening. Is that correct, Joe?
Correct.
Liz?
No, no.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. If any members of the public have any public comment this evening, please just raise your hand and say your name on the record. All right, seeing none. I would turn next to town administrator, select board reports. Let me start this evening with with Michelle.
Nothing. Thank you.
All right.
Nothing to add. Thanks.
Tom?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Bill.
Joe?
Just adding that there's a public information session this evening, seven o'clock at Lyndon Pond's. Arthur has really done a great job orchestrating that and looking forward to participating.
Liz?
Nothing to report.
I have just one item. Last night, I went to see Shrek the Musical at the middle school. And it was a fantastic performance, really enjoyed it. The cast and crew were outstanding. I know a lot of hard work went in there and into that performance by the students. And it was, it was, it was great all around, really a great evening, and just the talent that's in our drama program is really unbelievable, even at the middle school level. So it was a real pleasure to see the show, and my kids loved it as well. So it was wonderful. So my congratulations to them. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All of the favorite, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm as well. The motion carries. Everybody have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Next week. Take care.